Being of the Menifee City Council to order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August. I'll note Councilmember Furman is absent. Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. And Mayor Mann.
Here. We have Pastor Tim of Vania Church to deliver the invocation. We have some static here. We have cell phones or something that's interfering with the transmission.
Father in heaven, we thank you so much for the city of Menifee. Lord, I'm particularly thankful for this because this is the city I call home. And so tonight, as this meeting is taking place, I pray that your presence would be here, that you would give wisdom to our city officials as they make decisions for the betterment of our city here, Lord. I pray for all the city officials, our mayor, our city council, and everybody that works to make this city what it is. Father, we lift up our police department. We pray that our community would be a community that embraces our law enforcement officials as they do what seems so often to be a thankless job. Lord, I pray that we would bless them, that we would be there for them as they're there for us. Lord, we lift up our fire department and all the officials for that. And any of our emergency response services here in the city of Menifee, Lord, bless them. Bless our school officials, our teachers, as they train up our next generation, Lord. I pray they would do that with diligence, with wisdom, Lord, as they train up their next generation. I pray that they would be learning, that they would be excited about the future. I thank you for the students that are here tonight as they see what goes on in a city meeting. I pray that you would open their minds to all that takes place and that you would educate them tonight. Father, we pray for all the local businesses here in Menifee, that you would prosper them, Lord, that they would do business well, and that this community would be known by having great businesses, Lord. We pray for the citizens of this great city, that we would be citizens that are proud of our city. We'd be proud of this beautiful place that we live, that we would keep it up well, that we would take care of our homes, that we would take care of our community, that we would love our fellow man. And so bless this evening, Lord, bless this meeting. We pray for all these things in the name of the Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Tim. Deputy Mayor, would you please render the flag salute?
Will you please put your right hand over your heart and follow me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And in case anybody was wondering, Vania, Pastor Tim's walking out, but Vania in Greek means grace. Isn't that right? Okay. Very good. So, thank you very much for both of those presentations. And on to approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Are there any changes? Are there any changes? So ordered. On to approval or modification of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda tonight, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, as posted.
Are there any objections? So ordered. On to public comments. We'll take the first speaker, please.
Marcia Carden.
Come close to my record. It takes a little skill.
I know.
Good evening. Could you speak into the ...
Where?
Yeah, there you go.
Up high?
Yes, there you go.
Is that better?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I just want to tell you, we had our fundraiser at Oktoberfest last Saturday. It was hard work, and we raised money. But the next weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, is our annual garage sale, and that is a fantastic event. I've left flyers out front, so if you have anything you want to donate, if not, maybe you come and buy something. And then, two weeks after that, we have the golf tournament. So we're working hard, trying to make a lot of money for all the poor puppies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Bob McGee.
Mayor McGee from Lake Elsinore, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mann, honorable mayors of this, members of the city council. My name is Bob McGee. I'm the mayor of this beautiful city of Lake Elsinore, your neighbor to the east. But tonight, I'm here as a member of the Advisory Committee for Trauma Intervention Programs of Southwest Riverside County. Sadly, when their funding request appeared on your last agenda, no one from the organization was able to appear before you. And after reading the news accounts and your meeting minutes, I'd like to take this opportunity to answer some of the questions that were raised two weeks ago. TIP is an all-volunteer organization whose motto is "Citizens Helping Citizens in Crisis." Each member must complete a 50-hour training course and be ready to volunteer three 12-hour shifts per month. TIP volunteers are called upon by first responders, police, fire, and emergency room doctors and nurses, to provide emotional first aid to victims in the minutes and hours immediately following a tragedy, before their family members and support system can respond. In performing this task, TIP volunteers relieve this responsibility from the first responder and allow them to get on with their primary duties. They are, as former Sheriff's Captain Dave Fontenot put it, "force multipliers for your staff." When Terry Smith was missing, TIP was here, helping the searchers. In fact, between March and August of this year, TIP volunteers responded to 78 calls within your city limits and donated 196 volunteer hours. But it takes money to train and equip these folks. The cities of Temecula, Murrieta, and Lake Elsinore have each donated $10,000 this year and have maintained that level of service for quite some time. These civic donations come from their general fund since this group does not qualify for CDBG grant funding. I urge you to discuss this issue with your public safety professionals and ask them if TIP is a good investment. But regardless of your decision, these volunteers will continue to reach out and aid members of your community as long as there is a need and a willing and trained volunteer ready to respond. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Next speaker, please.
I don't know how to work this thing, so I'm assuming I press the button here. Okay. And is that legible? Let's see, how do we zoom in? Zoom?
You can, if you raise the arm up a little bit higher, there you go. Raise it until you ...
All right.
Okay.
Now, how do I get it back down?
Then zoom back out.
If you're going to run the country, you've got to know how to work this.
And sorry, Mr. Mudd, but your time is up. Next speaker?
I am here to announce that Douglas Gibbs will be a radio talk show host, will be announcing, thank you, will be announcing and talking to the public at Boston Billy's on October the 26th, Saturday, at 9:00 a.m. There will be a buffet breakfast there. And we are, the topic of this event will be constitutionalist, constitutional Republicans versus the progressive Republicans. That's okay. We are inviting the public to come. There will be a $10 fee per plate for the buffet, plus the drink. And we are opening it up to the public to ask questions and give their opinions about what the result, or what the answer would be within the Republican Party to fix the solution between the progressives and the constitutionalists. The progressive Republicans in, basically, their concerns are that they protect and preserve the party. That is their concern. The constitutional Republicans are more concerned about protecting and preserving personal rights. There is a chasm of difference between the two of them. In my never-to-be-humble opinion, people like John Boehner, the House Speaker, Mitch McConnell, minority Senate leader, are really progressives because they endorse and want big government. The people like Ted Cruz, Mike Lee, Rand Paul should have a C after the R for constitutionalists. Likewise, Bonner and McConnell should have a P after the R for progressive. I say this because they have demonstrated repeatedly that they are for things that are unequal. Well, for instance, they're engaging now in unequal rights. The constitutional Republicans are engaging in equal rights under the law. This is their concern. So these topics, these items will be brought up at the breakfast on the 26th. That will be 9:00 Sunday at Boston Billy's, two weekends from now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Sorry about that. Anyway, I'm here to shamelessly promote our riding club.
Now, if you would, put the arm down a little bit so we can see it.
Okay.
No, no, the arm of the elbow.
Oh, okay.
And then move, there we go.
There we go.
All right, thank you.
Anyway, I'm here to shamelessly promote our Riding Day Annual Military Fund, Family Fundraiser on the 27th at Farms of Today on Scott Road. It's just east of Leon there. We have a great time. It's for everybody, even if you don't ride a horse. It's a great time. We have a fantastic Halloween costume contest that the kids really go out for. Also, what we do is annually, we raise, our riding club raises money and gifts for a, we adopt a military family. Last year, we had the privilege of going to Miramar and really made militaries' families very special last year. We did very well last year, and they really appreciate it. It was really something. I don't need to tell you, nobody gets rich being in the military. And it's just a great way to help out. We also have a raffle, which, if you donate a canned good, which will help the family, and also, or for a dollar, which gets donated to the family. We will, we have a raffle for a very nice saddle rack that one of our members made, and it's really a cute saddle rack, as you can see on the bottom there. It's really nice. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Crowe. You may want to consider teaming up with the VFW post-1956 this year. They're planning on going and getting 750 pounds of turkey. Next speaker, please.
We're all going to try our luck with this thing. Close enough. Good evening, Mayor Mann and members of the Menifee City Council. My name is Paul Jacobs. I'm a resident of Temecula, but I'm here tonight as a representative of Riverside County United Communities. And RCTC provides speakers of interest to, in activities of governance. And it's not about politics, it's all about having an informed citizenry. And it seems like the night for Boston Billy's because this Saturday, we'll be meeting at 9:00. And we ask that people get there a little bit early and order breakfast. And there are flyers like this on the table in the back of the room, and all members of the public are invited. And our speaker this Saturday is Captain Mike Judge of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and he's going to be speaking on realignment of the California's prison population. And so where, once those prisoners get out of prison, it's in all of our interest to find out where they're going. So I encourage people from all communities of Riverside County to attend the meeting, and thank you for this opportunity.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for that. I just wanted to point out, aside from the 10,000 prisoners that they're going to let loose, and many of those are part of Los Angeles, San Bernardino, and Riverside County. In fact, it's heavy in that respect. Beyond that, the funding might not be there, as we read today, from a number of releases regarding any support or counseling or discipline that might be, one would expect with a recent-released prisoner. I thank you for coming here. Everybody ought to be very concerned about this.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton and Mr. Jacobs. Do we have any more public speakers this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you very kindly. On to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Updates and Comments. Anything? Mr. Edgerton.
I just wanted to make some comments in reference to what's going on at the present time in our United States Congress and our country. Very briefly, point out that it's just recently that we thought a democracy would be something that was workable. When I say recently, probably in the last 150 years. Aristotle said, "An hypocrisy won't work," because everybody becomes self-interested. And what happens is you go back to a tyranny. He said, "If you want to know the size of your country, you ought to climb a high mountain and look around you as far as you can see," and your country shouldn't be any larger than that. When the founding fathers discussed it, they pretty much came to the same conclusion as Aristotle. The nation for its power shouldn't be very much beyond the states. A little bit would go to the central government. The states would primarily run the situation. And certainly, they weren't going for a democracy. Democracy was a bad word in early America. And if somebody was running against you and you wanted to defeat them, say that they stood for democracy. Because people who didn't have some skin in the game were not supposed to be able to vote. And I'll remind you again that when Benjamin Franklin went and asked what kind of government, as he came out of the Constitutional Convention, said, "A republic, if we can keep it." And so what we have today, I hope we can keep what we have today, which is a democracy. I hope we can make it work. But I would hope everyone would appreciate, if this thing goes wrong in February and January, it is conceivable, I'm not saying it's predictable, but it is conceivable, that the impact of that would be greater than every decision the mayor and the city council and the staff could make over the next five years, maybe over the next 50 years. Abraham Lincoln said, "A house divided cannot stand." We, as you sit here today, we are a house divided. And we either are going to bring it back and learn to compromise on all sides, or we're going to lose what we have. The guy isn't here to scream, "The British are coming right now." But if you can't hear that, God have mercy on us.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmembers? Could you, Julie, could, I have one thing to update on, could you, while you put up that slide. I just want to share with the council and the public that I've been doing a 20, there's 26 HOAs in the city, and I've been reaching out to the HOAs based upon the four districts and trying to get out there and update the public with the council members that come with me. So I've had three of those meetings this month so far, and I have two more with one cancellation. So after this month, I'm going to hold off on that till January and resume with those presentations with my colleagues. But in the meantime, if you could go back to the next slide, that's better. Okay, thank you. I had the opportunity to attend a drive windshield tour of the Highway 74 realignment. Highway 74 is being realigned from where it currently exists, which goes along the 215 through Fourth Street and Paris, onto 74 as it currently exists, and it's going to be rerouted on Ethanack. And it's a $110 million project for 4.9 million, 4.9 miles. It's going to be six lanes on total, three on each side. It basically straightens out 74 through the northern part of Menifee and the southern part of Paris, and it's going to take about six years to do that. This is a Riverside County Transportation Department project, and it's presently being staffed by the county, RCTC, WRCOG, and the two cities. And I just want to share that with the public. If you could go back to the previous slide, if you look at the bottom topographical, that's what it's going to look like right there, that stretch of road. And then it also includes a flyover in concept, a flyover bridge where the train track goes over the northern part of Romaland right now on 74. So that's going to straighten out in the next six years. And it's not completely funded yet, but those things are, those discussions are going to start. It hasn't been approved from a policy decision standpoint from Menifee. It'll come forward at some point. It's a conceptual design. It's moving forward, and at some point, it'll come back to us for a policy decision on how we're going to help fund it. Mr. Edgerton?
I just wanted to point out, it just came over the wire, as expected, that the House of Representatives just approved the Senate bill. So it is over until January or February. And some of you young people may say, "Well, you're a councilman, this is the city of Menifee. Why, you know, why make it such a big deal out of that here?" If we get a compromise in January or February, then all this is, is a great historic message for you. If we don't get along in January or February, and I urge you to talk to your representatives and urge them to get along, then you'll find out that'll have a horrendous impact right here in the city of Menifee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Any other councilmember updates at this point? All right, thank you very kindly. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any changes to the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, please.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember August. Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
On, we have no public hearings this evening, and so discussion item 12.1, approved citywide record management system through agreement with a complete paperless solutions, aka CPS, on a cooperative purchasing agreement system. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're very excited actually to bring this forward through your consideration tonight. We anticipate it revolutionizing the way we do work, the way we do our agendas, and the way we do our records management. I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Bennett, your city clerk, for your staff report.
Thank you. Certainly Julie and Derek and I are pretty excited to be here tonight to talk about a citywide content management system. This is an item that was budgeted through your 2013-14 budget, and we've been working on it a long time. And I want to be clear here, by "we," the three of us certainly have been, but Mr. Williamson has taken the lead on walking us through things like what a cloud is. So, one of the things that we learned in our research was that Laserfish is the system that appears to be best suited for us to use. It is used in over 250 municipalities in California, and it appears it'll best meet our needs. And it's going to be able to help organize our records, implement an agenda management program that we're pretty excited about. The input of records and retention schedules together, so that as you put something in, it automatically knows what that retention schedule is through your input. And it will allow, the big part for us is allow greater public access to records. This will have public portals that will make this very accessible to anyone using our website. And over the period of implementation time, more and more records will become available on the public portals. Through interviews that Derek did set up, we have chosen Complete Paperless Solutions, CPS, as the firm best suited to walk us through this process. They're going to do the design, the installation, the training, and the support, and they're ready to go with us. And this does comply with our purchasing requirements. So we're asking that you would approve this agreement tonight to get us rolling.
Mr. Denver?
Shall move.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
We have discussion? Yeah, absolutely.
This is something that, the idea of going paperless in our system has been discussed for five years.
Yes, sir.
And it's finally coming to fruition. The, I would ask, inside of my comment is a question, how much money will we save in this project?
I can't quantify the exact numbers, but let me give you some ideas.
About three inches every mating?
Exactly.
Times whatever?
We process over 140,000 to 150,000 pieces of paper a year just for your agendas. That's a ridiculous amount of paperwork, and that paper cost alone would come to $1,500, $2,000. That doesn't include any staff time or the kind of time that it takes to put that all together. And not only that, the Public Records Act is very specific about what we need to provide. If that record is available online to the person looking for it, as you go through the online process to find what you need, they anticipate the reduction in time spent locating and retrieving records can be as much as a 75% reduction in time. So if we're processing an average of 300 or so public records requests a year, and just the clerks' department time alone is 20 or so minutes, you're looking at thousands of hours of time that will be saved through, not our department only. And there's so many other harder to quantify things, the electricity in the building, the time it took in planning, et cetera. There's a number of things that it will slowly reduce as we phase in, and it's going to be an amazing system.
If I may finish?
Yes.
The, this is something that's long overdue. This is bringing us clear up into the 20th century, and we should have done it a long time ago. This is a big improvement. We're way behind the curve on this, and I heartily support it.
Thank you.
Hardly or heartily?
Hartily.
Okay, just checking. Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, I supported this heartily and strongly. And partly in mind with these young people in the audience, this is their world, and we need to move in that direction. But I do hope, Madam Clerk, I do hope, Mr. City Manager, that you don't forget us old folks who have difficulty with computers, and there are few dinosaurs still living in Menifee who don't even have a computer. And when you say "online" to them, they don't know what you're talking about, maybe horseshoes. So if we can remember those old timers, and you'll have to remind them more than once.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, this city, and certainly this clerks' department, will always make records available, however is best suited for you and for our residents. But when many, many people are begging for that electronic record, we're going to make that much more available now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And it seems to me, my only comment, based upon your presentation and how this portal will be linked to our website, it seems to me that this will actually increase transparency beyond the documents that we already have available online, and that's pretty exciting.
You bet. That was, as I said, Julie and Derek and I, that was one of our major goals in this. And the agenda management system, I'm not going to lie to you, was pretty exciting, too.
All right. Marvelous. Well, we have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August. Thank you. Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
On to 12.2, reappointment of the Public Safety Standing Committee. There's no staff report. This is the mayor's action item. It's become necessary to make a change on the Public Safety Committee, and I'm seeking ratification of an appointment, reappointment of Mr. Denver and an appointment of Mr. August to the Standing Public Safety Committee this evening. May I have a motion to ratify?
Shall move.
Are there any other applicants?
Mr. Edgerton, would you like to apply for the job of ...
No way.
Public safety. You're already on the finance committee.
I'll support Greg, wholeheartedly. Second.
May I have a motion to ratify?
I'll move.
Are there any other applicants?
With Mr. Edgerton, would you like to apply for the job of...
No way.
Public Safety. You're already on the Finance Committee.
I'll support Greg, wholeheartedly, second.
Any, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August, Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, Mayor Mann.
Aye. On to City Attorney Reports.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Biggs. Mr. Johnson, City Manager reports.
Just two items. I wanted to announce that we have filled two vacant staff positions. One is the Assistant Public Works Director. Mr. Smith has some help coming finally. We are nearly fully staffed in Public Works as for our org chart now, after the two recent hires. Rafael Martinez, who's a traffic engineer from Corona, has accepted the position of Assistant Public Works Director. He'll be starting on Monday. After a very lengthy recruitment and several interviews, he, we did coerce him to come to our city, and, and we're really excited about that.
Hopefully, he wanted to come here. We didn't have to coerce too hard.
No, he, well, I was, yeah, no, he, he jumped at the opportunity, which was really good for us. He's been twelve years in Corona, mostly in the Traffic Department, working some CIP projects and running some street crews. So, we're getting a big, big hand up on the CIP, street crew side, and more importantly, freeing our, our city engineers' time for major projects. The second hire, we just, we just offered a position through the Public Works. We, it's an admin analyst position, which we had changed from what it was, Mike Anderson's former position. It was called something like Public Safety Coordinator. It wasn't really fitting what we needed to accomplish. So, we adjusted the duties, we placed it in the Public Works Department. A portion of the position will still be the Public Safety, but it'll be more of an interaction between our, our police and our fire to make sure we have the training and the, and the, and the CERT program, and some duties that are assigned with some grants that we had received. But the rest of the work will be in administrative analyst for Public Works. We offered that after a lengthy recruitment to Joe Gonzalez, and he's accepted. Joe comes to us from Senator Emerson's office, where he's spent the last three years working as a liaison between Senator Emerson's office, and he actually spent a year of his time here in Menifee, and he held office hours at the senior center for Senator Emerson. So, we, we feel really good about those two hires. They're both incredibly talented people, and it's gonna raise the level of what we can produce, and we're gonna move faster and stronger, and we're gonna pile higher and deeper now, and, and get some more, get some more work done. The other, I believe Jonathan has a quick update on Newport for you?
Very, very quick. Newport Road is on schedule. The contractor is moving the twelve-hour shifts to stay on schedule and move the project even more quickly.
Menifee Road?
Sorry.
And Menifee Road?
Menifee, Menifee Road. Newport Road, I'm sorry.
Do you have an update on Menifee Road as well?
I'm sorry. Menifee, Menifee Road, missing link. There's a lot going on on Menifee Road other than the missing link, but the missing link is moving along just fine, no problems there, and that's, that's on schedule as well. I talked to the team today, so...
Excellent. Super. Marvelous. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council, do you have any future agenda requests? Mr. Denver?
I now have some questions answered, and I'm sure you folks do, too, on the TIP program and how it helps our people. I would like to ask that the City Manager bring that back on the agenda when he seems, when he thinks that it's the appropriate time to do so. I just want to have made the statement that at some point in the future, we ought to be talking about that again, if there's a second.
Well, I would second it from the standpoint of bringing it back to the budgetary process.
I, I just don't want it to go away. I want somebody to...
Okay, I, I would support a future discussion as it, as it tied to our next fiscal year budget, heading into the next year. Mr. Denver, uh, Mr. Edgerton?
Just a couple of points. First, in reference to Mr. Denver's request to bring that back before the council, I can't imagine anyone disagreeing with the fact that it is, it is an excellent program, and I'm sure we'll discuss it then. As I'm, what, could have said to Mayor McGee, that, you know, we'd like to have more police here, we'd like to have animal shelters, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the list just goes on and on and on. And we are short-funded right now, and that, that's my concern. The program, I'd support in a New York minute. Where the money comes from, I don't have a clue. One other thing, I'm thinking of making a talk like Senator Ted Cruz, because the mayor is about not only to beat my record, but to obliterate it, and, but seeing how Senator Ted Cruz's efforts ended, I, I think I'll stop right here. Thank you.
Actually, you sound a lot like Senator Cruz, and this evening, I think we're approaching twenty-four hours or so, it seems. By the way, I do think we ought to talk a little bit longer, because we have to go longer than what, this, I mean, this is ridiculous to let this thing go this soon. These people came all the way down here for a meeting, and I think we ought to talk about something for a while.
Well, you know, after five years, maybe, maybe we've all gotten a little bit more expedient and efficient in our processes, and our management team is more sophisticated, and the council has some policy things that, we're, we're doing some good stuff, so obviously,